Welcome everyone to the City Council Meeting of September 4th. This evening Mayor Bristol will be absent, I will be presiding over the meeting. And we usually like to start our meetings with a moment of silence, please join me. Please rise for the flag salute.
The United States of America is a republic which Japan's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So far everyone present, mine is Counselor Pell. We will move on to the First Order of Business, which is a public hearing. And this is an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial. At this time I will open the public hearing for the previously stated matter. We will begin the hearing with a staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none, do any counselors wish to obtain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information that they've received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you Council President, members of the council and community. I've got just a couple of really quick summary slides for you, reminding you of the actions that you already took on this item. So there's two different applications, one is comprehensive plan amendment, one zoning map amendment. The application is a type 4B. This was a recommendation to the council from the planning commission. This is on property owned by Dale Hurst and it's currently zoned industrial and the proposed zoning is general commercial. We're talking a total of about 5.22 acres. Here again is the property that you talked at your August 21st public hearing about. It's on the corner of Agnes and F Street, Foothill Drive. The zoning today is industrial and the proposal is to change it to general commercial. On August 21st, council heard the matter, you opened both public hearings and motioned to approve both applications, changing it to general commercial. Included in your packet is some findings of fact which are reflecting all of your comments and the direction that the council provided at that August 21st hearing. So that's in your consent agenda. This item is particularly for the ordinances, so what we have in front of you is a potential motion number one, which is the comprehensive plan amendment. And then we have a potential motion number two, which is a zoning map amendment. And both of those do have first and second readings.
Thank you. Is there anyone, is the applicant present and would like to make a statement?
Good evening Council, Mayor Justin Gerlos, Gerlos Engineering Consultants. I think we summarized everything last time in the memorandums and if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but just wanted to open that up.
Thank you, council, any questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Is there anyone regarding public comment, is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. I'll turn this back to the council, the public portion is now closed and the matter is before you for consideration. Counselor Younger?
Since we've already debated this and gone through this last time a lot, I'm just going to go into a motion, I move to adopt the ordinance to amend comprehensive plan. Land use map from map number 36-0516 CC, tax lots 600 and 700 from industrial to general commercial and have it read by title only, first reading.
Seconded by Counselor Riker. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Counselor Younger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Unanimously passed.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants pass, amending the comprehensive plan map amendment for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial.
Counselor Riker?
I'd like to move to adopt the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan, land use map from map number 36-516 CC, tax lots 600 and 700 from industrial to general commercial and have it read by title only, second reading.
Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, passes unanimously eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants pass, amending the comprehensive plan map amendment for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial.
The Second Order of Business under the quasi judicial public hearing is item B, ordinance amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial. On the screen reflects a potential motion. Counselor Lovelace?
I think what we need to do is, is we didn't open the public hearing for both, so we probably should go ahead and read the amendments for the part B, quasi judicial.
From the beginning again. For item B, at this time, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for the ordinance amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial. We will begin by hearing with the staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by person in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none, do you, do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information they have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Staff request that our testimony from the comprehensive plan amendment be included in the zoning map amendment.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none. The public portion is now closed and the matter is before the council. Counselor Lovelace?
I move to adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map for map number 360516 CC, tax lots 600 and 700 from industrial to general commercial and have it read by title only, first reading.
Seconded by Counselor Younger, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, passes unanimously eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants pass, amending the comprehensive plan map amendment for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial.
The Second Order of Business under the quasi judicial public hearing is item B, ordinance amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial. On the screen reflects a potential motion. Counselor Lovelace?
I think what we need to do is, is we didn't open the public hearing for both, so we probably should go ahead and read the amendments for the part B, quasi judicial.
From the beginning again. For item B, at this time, we'll open a public hearing to consider an application for the ordinance amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial. We will begin by hearing with the staff report followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by person in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none, do you, do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information they have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the development code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Staff request that our testimony from the comprehensive plan amendment be included in the zoning map amendment.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none. The public portion is now closed and the matter is before the council. Counselor Lovelace?
I move to adopt the ordinance to amend the zoning map for map number 360516 CC, tax lots 600 and 700 from industrial to general commercial and have it read by title only, first reading.
Seconded by Counselor Younger, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counselor Younger?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Unanimously passed, eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants pass, amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial.
Counselor Younger?
Same motion, second reading.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Lovelace, any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Younger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Unanimously passed, eight to zero.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants pass, amending the zoning map for 398 and 440 Northeast Agnes Avenue from industrial to general commercial.
Thank you, moving on to council action, item A. This is an ordinance amending the Grants Pass municipal code section 6.46.020, parks described, and amending section 6.46.040, utilization of open city park space and declaring an emergency.
Good evening council, members of the public. This is really more of a house cleaning topic. This will amend Grants Pass's municipal code as parks described and amended and utilization of open park space and declaring emergency. As you may recall, on August 7th, City Council did amend several sections in the Grants Pass municipal code, and this is just a follow-up to that. We've just found some additional house cleaning that we wanted to make sure we clarified. In addition to the August 7th amendments, this proposal also clarifies police's authority to manage the new campsites that we have in place the same way we have previously managed them in the parks with no changes. So we're not looking at any changes in the way things are enforced from the past, we're just making sure that that's clarified within our code. So as an example, the language that is in front of you on the screen is what is the suggested code amendment changes. What it's doing is it's just saying, instead of such as providing examples, it's including but not limited to language, which provides for more flexibility. And then it continues to say undeveloped property owned by the city and authorized camping locations provided in the municipal code, authorized camping locations. So it's adding that. We believe that it currently allows for the enforcement, we wanted to provide that clarity for future use. It also strikes out city park space and authorizing camping locations under A, and then also provides utilization of authorized camping locations shall be subject to length of stay requirements set forth by council resolution. So again, it was really house cleaning based on your August 7th meeting and the actions taken August 7th to the code, we're just wanting to clarify that, clarify enforcement opportunities for our public safety departments. Alternatives is to adopt the ordinance or adopt the changes, move to additional discussion and take no action, and in front of you is a potential motion for first and second reading. With that, I turn it over to you, Counselor.
Council, any questions? Counselor Dilla Grange?
Yeah, thanks Erin. Regarding the footprint, I was going to see if either you or the chief could provide any information as far as has that footprint been followed pretty well, is that been an issue with folks?
Yeah, I can definitely take that. I think it could become an issue, I think it may be coming an issue. Folks are pretty tight together, there are some structures that are kind of larger, and the kind of direction and encouragement we've been providing is to maintain the same rules that they were maintaining at the park. It does have the potential though to increase that spatial footprint, so that's why we definitely want to make sure that we can enforce those rules accordingly.
Okay, and what does enforcement look like if someone is not able to comply?
I think that with all of the enforcement we've been doing over the years is utilizing a pragmatic, common sense approach to enforcement. Our folks aren't running around writing citations to people that may not be able to walk, they might need to utilize a wheelchair. Our folks have been working really well with Mint, for example, so my guess is they'd reach out to our Mint partners and see if they could help remedy that before issuing a citation. Compliance is what we're after, we're not looking to write citations.
Okay, I guess just to get to the point, do you, in your professional opinion, feel that eight by eight is an appropriate footprint for this?
If you remember from the original discussion, I sided with I think six by six, but since
Is there, I mean, does anybody have an answer for that? I mean, they show up when they want money, but what are they doing with that money, is what I want to know. People are over here, you know, living in this, whatever you call this, I guess, a compound, you know, where's our government in all this? You know, if these people were illegal aliens, do you know what would happen? They would all be in hotels somewhere, enjoying air conditioning and taking baths. But they're not. You know why they're not? Because they're American citizens. You need to take that at heart. So if you are an illegal, our country will, well, not our country, our government will throw everything at you. They'll give you everything you need. They'll set you up in nice encampments where they have these huge, you've seen those FEMA tents, have you seen those tents that FEMA sets up when their hurricane comes in? Do you see what they do? They set it up because people have been displaced. These people are displaced, right? Now, I'm only concerned personally with the actual people that need help. I have zero tolerance for the vagrants that roam our community, period. So I want to help as many of the folks out there that actually need help, that are, that maybe they had a little bad luck in their lifetime, but for those that run around our community that basically abuse and suck the resources from all of these other folks, I don't have any tolerance for that, but I'm still really, really, really flustered at the fact that our government has allowed millions of millions of migrants into our country, and yet we have Americans over there sleeping in tents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had, I have an office about a block and a half from here, and there's one thing I have noticed recently is the trash has been starting to build up on the streets, and I just wanted to make a suggestion that maybe we look at trash receptacles in areas around these facilities. I think it might give some people the ability to dispose of their trash versus throwing it down the street.
David Dapper, city resident. Sorry, I was so short last week, I couldn't think of anything to complain about. Thank you. But, you know, I'm thinking, we're talking about the truly vulnerable that are out there. The best way I can think of to get something done with that is to help Mint get that place going on Parker Place, because they're not going to do fentanyl Freddy, they want to take the people that need extra care, and it just seems like a win-win for everybody. And anyway, thanks again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and turn it back to council. Any discussion? Counselor Lovelace?
Well, I do agree with the keeping the size and what we've had, just because that's what everybody kind of knows, and that's basically what this ordinance is about. So I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the proposed ordinance amending Grants Pass Municipal Code, Section 6.46.020, Parks Described, and amend Section 6.46.040, utilization of open city park space and declaring an emergency, and have it read by title only, first reading.
Seconded by Counselor Riker, any discussion on that motion? I will say, I was down at the site today, and I got a good look at what's going on down there. I have a couple logistical concerns in regards to this ordinance. In a few days, people are going to be asked to move to the A Street site, and there was a head count of about 70 people, and there were over 40 tents, so I'm concerned with the six-foot buffer that logistically, that if those people want to be in compliance with the rules that we've created, they simply will not be able to fit at Six and A. I have a concern there, and because this is an emergency declaration, it means that it will go into effect tomorrow. The people that are down on J Street today, about a third to a quarter of them will be out of compliance tomorrow morning with this new law. So I think a 10-foot by 10-foot footprint would be more appropriate for the situation that we're currently experiencing, so those are the two concerns that I have.
I understand your concerns greatly, I think, but I don't think putting a 10-foot by 10-foot is going to help the situation. The situation is, how do we make it into a rotation that something works in terms of movement? Because by making a larger footprint, it's just, I don't know how that solves that problem. I think that knowing what's been utilized and used is good. I don't, I agree, this is a situation that we have to deal with, and we have to figure out what to do with in terms of the amount of people in the movement, you know, if everybody comes up at the same time, you know, but it's no different than, you know, when you build a board or you build something, you do a rotational sense to where, until it starts to work, and I don't know if that's something our police can do or whatever. When you realize you're to the point where you can't move more people over there, you don't do it. You just kind of do it in session. So that is something I think we just have to do, because I can't see as possibly, like you said, taking 70 people and putting them on Sixth and A. It won't happen. So I think that somehow staggering it might be something to consider doing, but I don't think that changing this footprint is going to really make a difference. I think that that's just what we try to keep what we've had in terms of doing it, and then we come up with some sort of a system where we work with the police officers and say, hey, this doesn't make any sense, we've got to do some sort of alter, altering thing to make it work. So those are my thoughts.
I think, maybe I wasn't clear enough in terms of the six-foot buffer that's in the...
Between, yeah.
Yeah, to not, that will come into play tomorrow, and so even less people will be able to fit on the Sixth and A site is my concern. My other concern is that the people that are out there, maybe they have a four-person tent, maybe they have whatever that looks like, it's maybe a foot bigger than eight by eight, so that means by tomorrow morning, their housing situation would be illegal. So those are the two concerns that I have. Did you have something to say? Go ahead, Counselor Dela Grange.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear from either the city manager or the chief, because, you know, we can assume as the policymakers that you are going to do to be able to handle and flex with the situation, but I think instead of having to call another special meeting to address it, I think we should just be, get clarity on it now and how it's going to be addressed. So is there anything you can say about capacity issues at Sixth and A and how that's going to be handled?
Yeah, I think, one, the footprint is eight by eight, I believe, and not six by six, so I wanted to make sure it's clear. It's eight by eight.
It's a six-foot distance between, I know.
We currently have in the code, and are able to enforce that right now. We're just adding this language for clarification, so we're not asking to change any enforcement actions or activities. We have the authority to do enforce that, and we are, we are working on continuing compliance of what we had before we established these urban campgrounds. The, with regards to the transition of all at once to one location to another, that really is, is not a realistic aspect, just from the standpoint of the way it's used. There's individuals that are coming in, new or different, on a daily, weekly basis, and so that means that person's time starts at a different time than someone else's time. So not all 70 people or 50 people or however many people are in the J Street site have the same time limit of when, it's not like Monday through Friday, and then Saturday's closed and everyone has to move. So there is going to be a transition where not everyone is, is asked to comply with the one-week resting period that council has provided. That timeline will not be the same for everybody. This also brings up another thing which we don't need to discuss tonight, but there's, well, I won't even bring it up tonight, but, so, yeah, that, we don't see that as a mass exodus of all individuals in J Street at once to go to the Sixth and A Street.
Okay, so just to make sure I heard you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if Sixth and A becomes full, does that mean we stop enforcing until it's not full? Because we can, we can, you know, play with like the theoreticals, but like, what is the plan if this site is full? Like, what will we do when this is full?
I'm happy to jump on that, to probably provide some clarity. This is new to everybody, and I've mentioned from the beginning and how we enforce the rules, we're pragmatic and reasonable. I also think a lot of the people that Counselor Jay may be speaking to won't come over to this site. There's a lot of people that absolutely do not want to come over here because they're far too close to the police department or city hall. And then when I think about the distance, the gap in between tents, the closer you put people together, the more room people have, in my opinion, as a professional police officer, to hide and do narcotics. Also, I think there's a lot of people that suffer from different mental health issues as well, and providing them a little bit more space is probably more beneficial anyway. So providing less of a space in between tents, I think, in my professional opinion, is a mistake. I would much rather see gaps in between tents, so that when we're around there supporting the people that are trying to follow the rules there, we can see everything that's going on. For example, I jumped on the camera last Thursday before the ballot measure 110 changed, and almost immediately, a group of men appeared to be utilizing illegal substances. So I think it's imperative that we look at the broader picture. How do we bring safety to that location? By keeping things the way they are and giving us the continued authority to trespass people and enforce the rules based upon behavior. I think we can bring some sort of semblance over there, but as you can see right now, there's not a lot of people over there, and I don't think it's going to be overrun with 60 people when we start making moves, but we'll also make common sense moves as well. We're not going to go all, we're not going to all of a sudden go over there and remove 50 people because the time limit has come. We have to utilize discretion, no different from anything else that we enforce in the city.
We will not be providing enforcement because we have that discretion available to us that will create an issue for the city. We will utilize discretion to make sure that what you mentioned as an example does not occur, and if we get to a point where we're looking at it getting to that point, it will provide that discretion, provides us enough opportunity on the dais to have a discussion about space and availability and what the next step would be for the city.
Okay, thank you. I think that satisfies my, my concern. However, there was one other piece about trespassing individuals. I assume if they're trespassed from one site, they, the only other place that they can camp is the other site, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and there will be folks that are problematic, that receive citations and will be trespassed. There will be crime, there are crimes happening, and they will be trespassed from that location, and they will have an opportunity to go to the other location, and they'll have an opportunity to reach out to additional resources that we have in a room like Mint, Gospel Rescue Mission, different types of places around town.
Okay, thank you. I know our legal counsel is not here tonight, but in the situation that an individual gets trespassed from both sites, and there is no location legally for them to camp, is there any sort of liability risk for us in that scenario? And if you don't know right now, I think, you know, you could get back to us with an answer.
Yeah, we'll get back to you with that answer.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Fazer?
Yeah, this one's on the books already, as previously mentioned, and if I heard it loud and clear from the director of public safety, that the rules are working, let's keep the rules the same, you know, in regards to density on A Street, going from 64 square feet to 100 square feet, if density's the issue, that's a 56% increase, you know, so effectively increasing that footage is going to decrease density potential on that lot. If 64, if 64 square feet works, by the opinion of the people that have their boots on the ground, I'm compelled to agree with their opinion and allow them to utilize their discretion about trespassing and all things discussed, so I'm fine with this mo, I'm fine with this proposal.
Anyone else? I would tend to agree, Counselor Fazer, that an increase in the footprint would also make A Street less workable. That's really the concern that I have. I see merit to the six-foot buffer, I'm just concerned of logistics. There is a motion on the floor to approve as written. Counselor Lovelace, you made that motion, how do you approve?
Yes.
Excuse me, how do you vote? Thank you. Counselor Yonker?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously, eight to zero.
In ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass amending Grants Pass Municipal Code, Section 6.46.020, Parks Described, and amending Section 6.46.040, utilization of open city park space and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. The next council action item is a motion appealing this...
Second motion, second reading.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Yonker?
Same motion, second reading.
Thank you. And a second? Counselor Lovelace, thank you. Counselor Yonker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Fazer?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
In ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass amending Grants Pass Municipal Code, Section 6.46.020, Parks Described, and amending Section 6.46.040, utilization of open space, open city park space and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Moving on to the next council action item, item B, and this is a motion appealing the sewer system development charges for Greenfield RV Resort.
Thank you, council president and council. A little bit more of a presentation for you on this one. I believe this is the first system development charge appeal that we have brought to you, so I'm going to go through a little bit of detail in trying to explain what the situation is, what your role is in hearing the appeal, and this is basically a motion to uphold or deny a system development charge appeal related to the Greenfield RV Resort. So Oregon Revised Statutes authorizes local governments to establish system development charges, which are one-time fees on new development, paid at the time of development. SDCs are comprised of a reimbursement fee to recover costs that have been already accrued or paid for by the water system associated with capital improvements, and also an improvement fee, which is to pay for future improvements to mitigate the impact of that development. Again, SDCs are paid at the time of development, and it's based upon the amount of capacity that a particular connection will consume relative to a single-family house. So key facts about system development charges. They are a one-time fee, they are not ongoing. You pay them at the time of development, and you never pay them again. Properties that have already developed do not pay SDCs again unless they redevelop and consume an additional amount of capacity. So if they redevelop at a lower capacity, they do not pay, or at the same capacity, they do not pay again. If they come in and they double their consumption, they would then pay a larger SDC, or the difference between the SDC that was paid and the current demand. SDCs can only be used for capital construction, they cannot be used to offset operational costs, they can pay for new infrastructure or projects that increase capacity in existing infrastructure, but they, again, they cannot be used for operational uses, and all of the projects that they do support have to be identified in our master plans, so we can't just go draw a line on a map and say, oop, SDCs are going to pay for that. They have to be in our adopted master plan and part of the funding strategy that adopted that methodology. The other important thing to note about system development charges is they currently do represent about 15 to 20% of our wastewater capital improvement program. So city council did update the methodology in December of 2019, and then two months later, in February 2020, the SDC rates were adopted. The adopted rates took into consideration home sizing, as you recall, at that time you were looking for a way to incentivize the development of ADUs and smaller houses and more houses in general, and so we developed a rate that took into consideration a small house, a regular-sized house, and a larger-sized house, and we charged the SDCs out accordingly based upon an assumed fixture count for each of those types of developments. With a regular house kind of being that normal standard-sized home, one equivalent residential unit, or ERU, and it is assumed to have 19 fixture units in that house, and I'll get into the fixture units a little bit later in the presentation. Mobile home parks were considered, and they were treated very similarly to multifamily developments, and are charged out at .64, so a fraction of a one ERU, and that is, again, because of the lower assumed fixture count. However, RV parks... However, RV parks were not. So Greenfield RV Resort is a phased development with a full buildout of 118 spaces and numerous shared facilities, including guest services, laundry, et cetera. Phase one of the development, which is what the SDC appeal is based on, includes shared facilities and 78 RV spaces. Combined, phase one totaled 53, or 55.33 ERUs, and total SDC, sewer SDC fee of about $242,013. And I worked the math right there. What I wanted to show is that it was charged out at .64, which is how we have charged out similar RV units in the past, similar to a mobile home. And so the 78 units times the .64 gives us 44.9, basically, ERUs for that development. The other five were related to the shared facilities. So the municipal code does not give staff the authority to waive, reduce, or negotiate system development charge. That resides with you, the City Council. However, it does lay out an appeal procedure, and I'm not going to go into all the details. However, a person who does disagree with the assessment of the fees, or the way in which SDC fees are being utilized in the capital program, can appeal to the city manager, to the council, through you. I skipped, jumped all the way to E and F on this because they're the most relevant to tonight's discussion, but the City Council shall hear and determine the appeal on the basis of the appellant's written statement. That was included in your packet, the letter from Gerlitz Engineering, to talk about their justification for the reduction in the SDC fees. And the appellant shall carry the burden of providing, of proving that the determination being appealed is incorrect, or what the correct determination should be. So to get into a little bit more on the ERU calculation, ERUs are calculated based upon the average water use, and I'm an assumed number of fixtures per residential household. So how much material do we anticipate going into the sewer system? One ERU is based on 19 fixtures. And a fixture is any combination of sinks, toilets, showers, hosebibs, dishwashers, and it's not like one sink equals one fixture. There's a pretty complex table that the building department calculates from. I want to say that a sink is actually a three, and a shower is a one, or a toilet's a one. But anyway, they calculate all of that out. And then for commercial developments, SDCs are calculated based on the fixture count itself. It's not based on equivalent residential units. And so when they turn in their plans, they show how many toilets, how many sinks, how many hosebibs of what type, and then we calculate their system development charges from that. Because residential really represent the most frequent calculation that SDCs are made, almost all communities lump residential into one category, and so they create that ERU or equivalent residential unit, and calculate all of the houses the same, as opposed to trying to get individual plans that show how many sinks you put in, and how many toilets in what area, and what bathroom, showers you put in. And so that's why a residential unit is a one. So the applicant has filed for the appeal of the reduction of the system development charges based on reduced occupancy rates. Their study shows that RV parks in general don't run fully occupied. Therefore, they will not be consuming the full amount of potential sewage. They, I think the numbers that they presented in their letters averaging about 60 to 70, with about a max 78% occupancy during peak. And the, Justin is here to speak to that a little bit more, you can ask him further questions. Staff does not support granting the appeal on that basis. The reason for that is, SDCs are charged based on the capacity that the development could consume. So if you put in sewer connections for 200 connections, it is possible that you would have 200 connections worth of sewer. We're going to need to provide piping for 200 connections, we're going to need to provide downstream treatment capacity for 200 connections. Assuming that you are going to run at 70% occupancy is a, is a bad gamble on the part of the city, and we can't, we don't warrant that. We don't believe that we should support it on that. However, consideration should be given based on the premise that most of the RVs likely do have a lower fixture count per RV unit than a mobile home does. They are typically smaller, they have less of a footprint, they have generally only one sink or a small lavatory, their fixtures run at smaller rates, lower rates. Our staff research showed an average RV range from 40 to 80% in other jurisdictions' system development charge tables. The consultant from Justin and his team found rates comparable to 50 to 55%. When you look at the number of fixtures in an RV, it's in the seven to 10 range, is what we had calculated with the building department, which is roughly right around 50% of our standard ERUs, which is 19. So on that basis, staff does support a new rate for RV park developments at a .5 per RV unit. So there are cost implications. This action will have future impacts on sewer capital budget. This would reduce the SDC assessed to an RV space of $612 per space. For the concurrent development alone, this is a reduction of $72,000, and that's for both phases. For the current phase, it's about $47,760. For developments that are currently in the planning phase, these are ones that we have seen in the planning office, or that are currently under construction, there's an additional $184,320 of potential lost SDC revenue. Now, I want to note that this is really unusual. I have been with the city now for a really, really long time. We have not seen RV park developments. This is like the first ones we've seen in a lot of years. The first one was out on Rogue River Highway, and that was four years ago. Since then, we've seen quite a few more, but they just have not been on our radar. So I don't, I think this isn't, you're not going to continue to see a ton of these get put in, so I don't know that its overall impact is as significant as these numbers might lead us to believe. Because there's just, there's usually not a lot of room for these, anyway. So the call to action we do have today, there is a 30-day timeframe for council to respond to the SDC appeal. The options are to uphold the application for the appeal and grant a reduction of 50% of, to 50% of the standard SDC for development, including the future phases for this project, and also to direct the city to update its methodology to include RV developments for future projects. So that is something that we'll need to go back, we'll need to update our SDC methodology to include this, should you choose to uphold this appeal. Staff do support upholding the application for the appeal based on the apparent fixture count disparity from between this and a mobile home, or to a smaller-sized ADU. Or the other option is to reject the application for appeal and keep the existing rate practice of charging .64 of standard rate. I did have a potential motion for you there, and also, I believe you were copied on a letter from Mr. Tom Bradbeer of our Budget Committee, who did voice opposition, but again, staff does support the appeal. And with that, I would take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Counselor Riker?
Thank you, Jason. When you do the calculations for the SDCs, usually an RV park has onsite showers and onsite laundry facilities. Are those included in these calculations when you come up with the-
Yeah, that, that was part of that 5.3, the additional ERUs that were charged out. And then, so that, yes, they are charged out separately, just like a commercial development, by fixture count.
Okay. So by that comment, is the RV space have one multiplier, and then those have a different multiplier?
Yeah, they would have a no multiplier. They would just be charged out by the fixture count, which is converted to an equivalent residential unit, and then the other ones would be added to that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fazer?
Yeah, I think there's a fair argument here, but I have to ask, if there's 200 units, and I hear you say that the city will have to then design-build for capacity of 200 units, that could easily manifest a shortage, if you will. So if this reduction is made, does that mean the city then will plan for that 55% of the theoretical maximum capacity and actually design-build infrastructure in the ground?
Not sure how to answer that question.
So you have, so you have, so you have, do you understand my question?
I do.
I think that's the first point, okay.
So again, I think because we're recognizing the fact that an RV is going to produce less waste into the sewer treatment plant, that's what we're accounting for. So therefore, yes, there's 200 connections, but they're at a lower volume of discharge than a traditional house. So we would then need smaller pipes, smaller treatment capacities down the road, and that's what this SDC is accommodating.
Yeah, so the, so the question would be then, so it's not just a reduction of SDCs, we can actually see smaller infrastructure that accounts for that reduction down the line?
Hard to say that, because I, it's hard to say. You know, you're not going to see very many of these RV park developments, so I don't know that you would see a reduction in pipe size, right? Our minimum size is eight-inch, you know, maybe we don't have to go up to a 12. But that, it's hard to say, it depends on the basin-by-basin approach.
Okay, but I'm talking about the actual design-build of the infrastructure down the road. What, what capacity is that going to be designed to? Is it going to be designed to the theoretical 200 maximum, or to the, to the, to the reduction based on ERUs for RVs?
Well, that would be up to the developers, because it's all onsite and private.
Sure, sure.
So we would not have anything to do with that. It's only when it leaves and becomes public that we would have any input. Did that not quite get to there? I know, we're just a little apart, aren't we?
We're this close.
Okay, sorry. I could tell when I looked in your eyes.
So if you anticipate half load on the infrastructure, but it's actually 100%, right? You could imagine, then, that your predicted deficit is going to be realized, right? The follow-up question to this would be, where do you get those funds from, and what infrastructure is going to actually be designed down the road when it becomes public waste for a project like this?
So if there's a deficit, the, the additional dollars will come from where they always have, which is from the rate structure. And if we have to upsize something in the future, I mean, in general, we design above where we need to be slightly anyway, so we should be okay. We're not going out and sizing all the pipes downstream based on this one development, it's based on the entire basin. And so in general, the one RV park, it's, it's impact is going to be pretty limited on the entire basin, so I, I think we're okay.
Sure.
You know, one of the things that we may want to talk about in the future is a methodology whereby, in, in a year or two years, if we missed an assumption, SDCs could be reevaluated, but that's a conversation for a much different day. And traditionally, it's not, it's not been done.
Sure. But the purpose of the question is to sort of align my expectations with a move like this. I presume that was the answer to this question, and that would be really the only consideration that I would have made for this reduction, and it's sounding like it's just not that big of a deal.
Yeah, I mean, because we're designing on such a larger basin, I don't think the impact is as big. It's similar as what we do currently for like an ADU, where we charge it out. We know that its impact on the system is greatly reduced, because it's such a smaller house and a smaller footprint, it's going to produce less waste into the system.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
And Justin is here to represent the applicant. Thank you.
Did the applicant have anything they wanted to add?
Good evening again, Justin Gerlitz, Gerlitz Engineering Consultants, on behalf of the applicant tonight. Thank you, Jason, for that very detailed explanation. Jason's been great. We've been having a lot of discussions on this topic to try to come to a reasonable rate structure, because we are here specifically for a project tonight, an appeal for this, this current project, which is kind of, we'll call it first-in-line of several projects. But as you know, tonight, we also voted on another project we're working on, that's an RV park. So we've been doing a lot of RV parks. RV parks are kind of a new, they're not new, but they're, they're kind of the thing right now. A lot of them we do in the county, and one of the things that came to light by working on projects in the county is we have to design septic systems for these RV parks. DEQ is involved in that, and they have very specific rate tables or flow tables for these RVs. And for instance, their tables right now say, a single-family home, three-bedroom, two-bath, on average, produces 450 gallons a day. An RV produces 100 gallons a day, per the DEQ tables. So DEQ has already recognized that there's a significant reduction. And then you look at just the commonality of what Jason had went through, is, you know, a multifamily rate we have, which is, which is there because we know that, let's say, a two-bedroom, on average, apartment or ADU is going to produce less waste than a three-bedroom house. Typically, they have one, one bathroom versus two for a three-bedroom, two-bath house, on average. Single-family, or these, these multifamily units typically have washers and dryers, dishwashers, bathrooms, full kitchens, and larger tenant numbers, children, for instance. Whereas an RV, many of you have probably been in RVs or own RVs, low-flow fixtures, typically, one bathroom almost always, unless you get into a really monster RV. Often, you don't have a dishwasher. Often, you don't have a washer and dryer, or if you do have a stackable, which is a less volume, less water, and less waste. And tenant numbers typically are smaller, on average, especially for longer-term tenants. So with that, SDCs are really, therefore, you're paying for your use of the system. So we started looking at these RV parks, and as Jason mentioned, we're not asking for a reduction on the bathrooms or the common buildings, we're looking at those as full rate, full use. We're just looking on at the RV specifically because clearly the rates, the wastewater flow rates are less, far less than a typical single-family home, or even a multifamily, say, two-bedroom, one-bath unit. So we really went through a lot of numbers. I included Rogue Valley Sewer Services chart in there, they have a 50% reduction rate. Rogue Valley Sewer Services represents most of the small communities around Medford and towards Grants Pass. So I look at that as, hey, that's a local organization representing a lot of communities in our area, representing a very similar pattern in RV usage and stays. As Jason mentioned, we did throw in there that most RV parks aren't full all the time, but we came to the conclusion that they could be. So we really threw that in there more as a supporting factor, but not as the key factor in what we're asking for tonight. And, you know, overall, we are still going to be paying a significant sewer SDC rate on this project. We're just asking for a reasonable reduction to accommodate the flows that are expected on this park, and hopefully setting ourselves up for a rate change that would apply to other RV parks in our community. So with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions that council may have.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Counselor Dela Grange?
I think you could probably answer this. The, the current rate structure is 64% of a full unit?
That's correct. For, for multifamily units, that's correct, from a full, single-family unit.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, I just, I was looking at the chart that you had, and obviously you said regional, that was the Rogue Valley Sewer Services, that's what you're talking about?
That's correct. That's what that chart is, is in there for, and it shows that, that also a 50% reduction allowance for RVs.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, thank you for working with the city, and Jason, too, because that, I mean, that's, I think what we're more than anything trying to do is get that connection and the communication going, so thank you for that.
Counselor Powell?
Yeah, so what I'm having trouble reconciling is, you know, when you speak about different types of houses, dishwashers and so forth, you know, typical, maybe a smaller apartment or an ADU might not have it, or clearly an RV would probably not have it. I mean, that to me is irrelevant, because the data kind of shows that washing dishes by hand, believe it or not, uses about the same amount of water as a dishwasher. So to me, it's, it's really the concentration of the number of people, is what it comes down to. Now, a typical three-bedroom, two-bath house, you know, might have a much larger footprint with much larger yard, et cetera, and they're going to water the yard somewhat, but there's still not going to be that many people there. So, you know, when you cram a bunch of RV spaces together, there's very little green space, or very little, you know, spaces around the boundary, they're packed, you know? So they're going to be using a lot of water, and I'm having, I'm having trouble, like, reconciling, I'm not really looking at a three-bedroom, two-bath house on a, on a, you know, sixth of an acre, as necessarily having, you know, less impact than if you crammed, you know, however many RV spaces, you know, on that same-size parcel. So I don't really understand how this is going to be less use of water on the same, same, same-size property, because it's really based on the, to me, it should be based on the number of people. And, you know, there's going to be more people in a smaller area in RV park than there would be if it was, you know, six to an acre, or eight to an acre of three-bedroom, two-bath houses. So I'm not sure how that, how, how the city realizes any reduction there for a given amount of land, you know?
So- So it's specific to, and I'll just start off with, the reason I'd mention a dishwasher is, as Jason mentioned, the rates are all based on plumbing fixture counts, and that's just how they're calculated. But in this, in this case, to respond to your question about density, each unit is still being assessed a specific rate. So right now, per today's rate, it'd be 64% of the single-family rate per RV, exclusive of the bathrooms that are, that are being added on to that. They, what we're saying is, if you look at it as a per-unit basis, a multifamily housing unit would use more water than an RV unit, and therefore, more wastewater would go down into the system. So, you know, we're asking for essentially a 14% reduction, which is probably what's actually much more reduced in an RV versus a multifamily house. So, you know, when it comes to like the site itself, we're not having an actual reduction overall in the site. We're actually saying, hey, we're going to assess this per RV because an RV uses much less water and wastewater than a typical multifamily housing unit. So we're still going to, that's why I said that the fee, like for this particular park is still a substantial sewer SDC that's being charged. We're just asking for a, a fair and equitable reduction based on the type of unit that we're talking about.
So I, you know, reviewing your letter a couple days ago or whatever, you know, I tried to think it through, and I still come up against, and there's a lot of, seemed to be common sense or valid points in your letter. I'm still trying to get my head around, if you have, let's just say, five acres, and you're going to put a number of relatively low-density houses on those five acres, that's, that's a certain load on our infrastructure. That same-size property filled with RVs is going to be a lot higher load on our infrastructure. So, you know, I'm still having trouble getting my head around how, how we're equating in, we're trying to figure out what's balanced between what a, a single-family home would be versus an RV, whether it's the .64 that we started out with and you want to reduce it further. But still, on a given piece of property, there's going to be a certain amount of load on the infrastructure. And I don't know that, and I actually am asking the question, wouldn't that load potentially be more?
So we, yeah, it would be more.
Justin, I'm sorry, just.
Maybe more appropriate for staff to respond to this question.
Yeah, if I could respond, because I, I think I get exactly what you're saying, Counselor Pell, and you're absolutely correct. You could put in very-low-density housing on that five-acre lot, and they're going to pay, say, 10 system development charges because we're only going to build 10 houses on that five-acre lot at a full rate, right, of a rate of one. Whereas with an RV park development, we might put in 100 units on that same one, but they're going to pay 100 times the .5, so there's, there's a much higher density factor. So they're still going to pay a much higher system development charge because they are providing much more impact to the system. So we are capturing it because the density is higher, they're still going to pay a much higher fee.
Counselor Riker?
Thank you, Justin. So just for the clarification, you already stated it, and I just want to make sure I'm adequately understanding it. The RV itself has a certain rate. Each fixture has a certain rate. So when you look at the whole property and the whole development, you have different rates?
That's correct. So we're, we're only focusing on the RV unit itself, you know, unit or dwelling, you know, someone was to live there. The actual bathroom rates are calculated the same way they would be on any other commercial facility, number of toilets, number of sinks, number of floor drain, all those things. So yes, we're not asking for a reduction on, on the RV park as a whole, only on the units specifically.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Dela Grange?
Yeah, I just had a question for Jason. The sewer SDCs pay into the sewer capital fund?
Absolutely.
Can you speak to the health and sustainability of that fund?
Yeah. So as I said earlier in the presentation, currently and right now, building is a, is a pretty good high clip. SDCs represent about 15% to 20% of our capital program. So it is a pretty significant portion. Now, that being said, I did not run the numbers for what percentage of that is now made up by RV parks. It probably will be a small portion. And our capital program is about $2 to $3.5 million per year, if that gives you a perspective of what 10% to 15% or 15% to 20% is.
Okay, so the health of that fund is, is
Pretty good.
adequate to address capital project runway for a number of years, and you don't see any issues with that?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me, let me expand that discussion, though. Our SDC fees, though, are still not set to maximum rate based on methodology and the future needs of the infrastructure and the life of the infrastructure and the planned actual use, useful life of the infrastructure.
That is correct.
So to answer that question, it is providing us with a level of capital improvement, but it's not providing us with the full level of capital improvement as our master plans have stated that we need. So what we're doing is we're running the useful life of those infrastructure that's under the ground longer than what's expected because we are not receive, we are not charging full SDC methodology amounts for our SDC fees. Did that, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I remember that from previous discussions, and I want to say that we're running at about 50% of where the master plan says we're supposed to be?
I think on the sewer side, it was probably closer to 60%, 65%. Water was probably 50 or less.
Okay, which means that we're running our sewer infrastructure 30% to 40% longer than we would like to?
Of the projects that were identified, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Justin. I'll open this up to the public. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of this? Come on up, state your name, if you live in the city or not, and you have two minutes.
I'm Adriana, and I do live in the city. And as much as I would love every extra penny to go into our sewer capital fund because we absolutely need it, I think there's a lot of benefit into the RV park development in our community. And I think it's pretty clear that you guys had previously considered the mobile park, the mobile homes reduction, and that's why you guys, I suspect, have a 64% reduction or, you know, rate there. So I support the first option of upholding the application for appeal and then reducing the RV rate to 50%. So thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and turn the matter to counsel. Any discussion? Counselor Fazer?
Well, we got three issues. So other agencies charge lesser rate. The other factor which, which, which I'm taking into consideration is the issue of occupancy rate, shown to be 70%, 76% in, you know, maximum occupancy over time. And third, you have the capacity issue, right? The fact of the matter is, RVs have fewer fixtures by design by half, which is how we calculate system development charges. Whether you agree with that or not, that's on the books. That's how we calculate these things. It's my opinion that the city has the upper hand in this negotiation, all things considered. And let's all pay attention to the fact that staff has recommended the reduction, and the developer has, is agreeable to the 50% reduction, applying to current and future projects within the city. So we have successful negotiations, they both agree, and I think that it's just more than fair to adopt a 50% reduction. And I'm willing to make a motion. I move to uphold the sewer SDC appeal for Greenfield RV Resort and for staff to update that sewer SDC methodology to accommodate future RV park developments, and that's by 50%.
Seconded by Counselor Lovelace. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Dela Grange?
Yeah, this is kind of a tough one. Staff research found results ranging from 40% to 80%. And so, you know, it could be argued that the 64% is well within that 40% to 80% range. In addition, we are and have been for many years underfunding our wastewater capital fund and replacement, and this is not going to help that. So I don't think I can support this motion.
Counselor Pell?
Yeah, this is, this is difficult for me for maybe some different reasons, but if we're not, if we as a city are not essentially charging sufficient SDCs to keep our infrastructure maintained and, and adequate for future needs, I don't necessarily think that it's correct that we pick on one particular segment and say, we're drawing a line here. It's possible that the rates for all should go up, but to say that we're going to choose this one segment to, we'll say, kind of instantaneously or artificially decide to all of a sudden get physically reasonable or responsible, I'm not sure where this is necessarily the place to draw the line. I think that it's possible, based on, you know, what we've heard in the past and what we heard again tonight, that we're, we're under-collecting across the board. You know, whether or not, you know, we feel that mobile home parks are a benefit or whatever, I think is kind of irrelevant. We're not really looking to incentivize them by giving them an artificially low rate because that leaves us short also. So while I think that it may not be smart to, to be collecting insufficient amounts for what we actually need, I don't know that this segment should necessarily have to bear more than what's fair for them. And that, that to me is, you know, what I'm wrestling with, is if it's fair for them, that's really kind of, I guess, maybe like my number-one priority. But I understand that it may not be overall physically prudent to go down this road.
Thank you. Counselor Riker?
Yeah, just to make it short, I, I think the SDC pricing, if that's another issue, that should be talked about at a different, different time. This is not what we're talking about today, is we're talking about what is fair. And I just tell you, from my experience, I mean, I know a little bit about septic tanks and stuff like that, and, and the formula, and I don't want to rehash out what some engineers already figured out what RVs have done. So I mean, if that's, if it's 50% or 60%, what they're saying the standard is, I think that's what we should go by. And I mean, I think staff has been hired to make these decisions, and, and if they recommended something, unless it's blatantly obvious that they're wrong, I don't think they are, then we should approve it. And if there's something wrong with our SDCs, then maybe that's a different discussion we should have at a different time.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, and I was just going to agree with that, that I don't think this is artificially, it is, it's an artificial, whatever Rob said, artificial, it is not artificial. It was drawn up because we did some factual information, and it's 50%. So based upon that, I am in support.
Counselor Dela Grange?
So just, just so we're all clear, in the packet says, staff research found results ranging from 40% to 80%. That's from staff. It's currently 64%. 50% is also in the range, so neither one is inherently unfair in this situation, but one is certainly more, or less sustainable with our capital fund.
Counselor Fazer?
You can nitpick what staff says in their report, and that's fine. What I am seeing is staff's conclusion is they agree with this reduction, and the developer agrees with the reduction. So you can take all the reasoning from staff, and you can take all the reasoning from the developer, but get yourself to the end and realize that staff, staff recommends this. They're fine with it.
I will say, I have concerns myself about the precedent that this decision may create. You know, we have a lot of RV projects coming down the pipeline, so this decision this evening may have an effect on a couple hundred RV park unit developments that we have in the future. So we may be creating a deficit this evening and into the future. With that, I will call a vote. Counselor Fazer, you move to affirm applicant's appeal. How do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yes.
Counsel Younger?
Yes.
Counsel Pell?
Yes.
Counselor Dela Grange?
I think you all know by now, I don't always agree with staff, so I'm going to vote no.
I will vote no. Counselor Riker?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Passes, six to two.
Counselor President, President, so to update, the SDC methodology is pretty extensive. So we'll get started right away. It is about a 90-day process with noticing and public comment. So there's a, there's a large process to come, but thank you for the decision. We'll be back in front of you as quickly as we can with the full process for the SDC update. And if at that time you want to entertain a different rate, we'll bring back the full study for your consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Fazer?
So to officially update the methodologies and to take 90 days, are we able to operate as councils will from this night moving forward with current applicants?
So if another project were to come in and pay SDCs tomorrow, I don't think we can. It would take another appeal. That's why we have to move as quickly as we can to update the methodology.
My question was for current applicants.
For the current applicant, you have made the appeal, you have upheld the appeal. He is good to go for both phases. That was what was in your motion tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not to individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter. The council has recently began enforcing the blue card rule, so if you are here to speak during public comment and you have not filled out a blue card, please get one from the back. You can find them on the wall near the entrance to the restroom, and get it to our city recorder, Karen, please. First, we have Will Lovelace.
Good evening again. I'm here to talk about public safety. I've talked to Warren today, I talked to the sheriff, I talked to the DA, I talked to a number of people. I'm embarrassed for our city, actually. I'm embarrassed for all of you because we no longer report crime. We report people that get arrested to the newspaper, but we don't report crime. In my neighborhood, I lost five grand on Sunday morning. In my neighborhood, three other people were hit with crime, bicycles stolen. Somehow or another, we have to get him funded again to, to support letting the public know what goes on in this city on a daily basis. And according to statistics, according to citidata.com, our crime rate's 1.2 times worse than anywhere else in the nation. Our crime rose 21% in 2022, higher than 88% of the rest of the country. Violent crime, according to the FBI, we were the highest in the nation increase in 2022. The public bodies need to be embarrassed in this community. The DA tells me he doesn't prosecute because he only has seven people rather than nine that he's funded for, but can't find people that he feels confident that can do the The sheriff has a jail that has two bunks in each jail cell. He only uses one of them, he tells me, because we have such a violent community, he's afraid somebody will get hurt in those jail cells if there's two people in it. And because of state law, this county would have to pay for that person to be treated at the hospital.
And next, we have Jared Twiddell.
Good evening, council members. I come before you tonight not just as a concerned citizen, but as someone who's been relentlessly targeted by somebody who comes in here and talks about me frequently. You'll know his name, it's Stephen Fitch. Stephen Fitch, I have a lifetime stalking record, yet he continues to repeatedly re- Stephen Fitch, I have a lifetime stalking record, yet he continues to repeatedly refer to me as a domestic terrorist and slander me in front of city council and the county commissioners. Each one of his baseless accusations designed to damage my reputation and incite fear and distrust within the community because of where I work. His harassment has taken a more dangerous turn lately online with his personal social media group. He regularly incites violence against me through death threats and hateful rhetoric. This is not just an online rant, it's cyber stalking, and it has real-world consequences for my family's safety. Oregon statute, specifically ORS 163-732, exists to protect individuals from exactly this kind of harassment. This law is designed to cover both physical and online stalking, and it's time that these protections were fully enforced. Case law across the country, including here in Oregon, has shown that when stalking orders are violated online, the consequences can and should be severe. I urge the council to recognize that Stephen's ongoing harassment is not only a personal attack, but a threat to public safety. His behavior escalates with the violation, and it's clear that without action, it will only continue to worsen. I'm requesting the council take immediate steps to ensure the existing laws are enforced, and this includes holding him accountable for his violations. This isn't just about me, this is about maintaining the safety, dignity, and rights of every council, or member of the community. I ask for your support in putting an end to this harassment, once and for all. Thank you.
Next, we have David Dapper.
Hi, David Dapper, city resident. And again, it was about what can we do to expedite the process of Mint getting the Parker Place permitted, and, I mean, it just seems like a, like a no-brainer to me.
So Catherine Hamilton, again, county. Thank you, chief, for your folks this morning at Fifth Street. It's been hell down there. It's been complete and total chaos. Friends can't sleep, dogs barking all night, fights. Anyone who's not in the parks, I look at, they don't want to be there, they're going to keep doing their own thing, they're going to be doing things that are now illegal. All my thoughts. Next thing, the folks at J Street, the dumpsters were full. I guess they just cleaned them one time, Monday morning or something. They had bags behind there, and once again, they're coming up to me going, "What do we do?" And I'm going, "I'm again, nobody." They say, "Well, they want us to use the dumpster, and we glad we got, we got the dumpster," but they're then putting stuff in garbage bags behind the dumpsters. There are the folks out there that are trying. There are the folks out there on Fifth Street, but anyhow, folks, I really wish something could be done about spay and neuter in this town. This, I gave out good 10 cards yesterday for Joko spay and neuter, and the animals are paying the price. The deaths, the little three-week-old puppy, I'm watching this person try to let the little puppy drink out of a bottle of water. I love that they have animals, but the population's really needs to be stopped. You have folks that are willing to help. If you guys could step and try to figure something out, it would be for the animal's sake. Thank you.
Next is Mike Pelfrey.
Again, Mike Pelfrey, city resident. This is actually going to be more addressed towards the chief, actually, all of you. I spoke this morning at the county commission meeting, and I've been disturbed by watching several videos and information. I know you guys have seen this information, I hope. If not, you need to, you need to look for it. With the amount of migrants that have come into our country, it's even more worrisome when we are a sanctuary state, city, and county. So what concerns me is that, and I'll just read, this is arguments against sanctuary city policies. One, sanctuary city policies can be seen as shielding criminals from justice by allowing them to evade prosecution for their crimes. Two, these policies can encourage illegal immigration as they may provide a safe haven for those who have entered the county country illegally or are in the process of doing so. And I'm bringing this up because we are a city that's struggling, I mean, we're struggling with our own citizens living on the streets. And if we have, and I say this because what, what concerns me is that when you put yourself out there as a sanctuary city, you're literally putting a sign, you're hanging a sign up saying, "If you are an immigrant, you are welcome to come here, and if you decide to break laws in our community, we're not going to do anything about it." I mean, there are literally videos out there that's being posted. I don't know if any of you have seen some of the stuff that's taking place in Colorado, but there are entire apartment complexes where the Venezuelan gangs have gone in there and are forcing the people, that these are citizens that are, these are Venezuelans that are forcing our citizens to pay them rent at gunpoint. That's happening in the United States of America. Now, why is that happening? Pretty simple. Democrats.
Next, we have Dell Aldridge.
Dell Aldridge, city grants passed. I haven't been thanked so much online and in person in a long time. You know, Park Watch, been beating you up. I, we've gone a long way, we've done a great thing. We, I made a comment last week that, right after the comment, I got out, outside, and I got beat up by some people, some good people that are car camping. Now, we need to get a place safe for them to go. I know it's an issue that no one wants to touch, but there is people in Riverside Park that are camping, and they don't have anywhere else to go. And, and the gates close, you lock them in. But then there's this whole nother element that I've been noticing lately. Go by Riverside Park at the Upper gazebo, and there's seven to 10 people there every night, partying. The same is true with Morrison Park. Even though they got all the lights off, there's, there's first picnic table to the left. They're partying every night, and the bathroom's still being used as drug preparedness. We need to do something about these car campers. Have some compassion, find a place for them to be, to be safe. Other than that, I just want to say, I have loved all the comments about, our page has turned into a, other than the few drug dealers we're tracking, it's turned into a, "Thank you, I've done this first time in three years. Thank you for opening those parks, and thank you, guys."
Next, we have Leonhart.
I'm grateful to be here. Thank you. I first wanted to thank all of you for allowing two more porta-potties to be placed at the J Street homeless internment camp. That has made a big difference in allowing people to get into restrooms in a timely manner. You know, I talked a little bit last week about the Stanford Prison Experiment of 1971. I'd like to talk just for a few minutes about the Stanley Milgram Experiment of 1961. Milgram devised the psychological study to explain the psychology of genocide. And he found, through an experiment where participants were told by an authority figure to shock someone, because it was in their best interest, because they needed to learn something. He found unbelievably that 100% of his participants were willing to shock people, do something against their moral compass, and I believe it was 65% going up to a full lethal dose of electricity. I heard tonight that staff recommended it, we need to do it. You know, sometimes the Supreme Court says it's legal, so people think we can do it. I would put forward to you that it is a form of torture for people not to be given water, not to be allowed to have shade, and to be forced to relocate periodically. I haven't heard anyone articulate a real good reason why that needs to be the case. I've only seen one of you come down to the J Street location. I am staying there night after night. Maybe I've missed someone, I hope so. I would invite you to come talk to the true experts, those people experiencing homelessness who know what they need and what will really help them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the blue cards that I have this evening. Counsel, would you like to take a moment? Counselor Yunker?
I'll take a crack at some of what Mr. Lovelace talked about. I wrote some notes here, and I just want to take it back a little bit of history, Bill, where we're at today because of 2020. In 2020, citizens of the state passed Measure 110. If you know anything about drugs and people that use drugs, they theft, they steal, they burglarize, they rob, et cetera. Well, when people pass that, well, I think it was 58% of this state passed that, what do we think was going to happen when we pass legal drug use? You need money to do drugs. It's not free. So they're not making money, so they're going to steal. And I'm not making an excuse, I'm just telling you what the result was from this people in the state passing that. This council is not the one that voted to pass Measure 110. But on September 1st, that's changed. Now, I'm not saying it's going to change like that, because we know it's going to take a long time to fix what the damage we did. And I'm not giving excuses for your trailer being stolen or any of your property, because obviously, it's not right. You shouldn't have to lock up your stuff, but we do. It's just how it is. These people don't care. They're thieves. I've seen all the pictures. You're not the only one that has to do this stuff. But there's another problem in the state, too, that I see. There's people in this state that are groups that lobby legislators to work against the judicial system in this state, to bring crimes, have less circumstances for crimes in this, in this state. So it doesn't, so it pays to be a criminal. That's happening at the state level. People think it's a crime, they, not a crime, they, they're working against law enforcement. They're trying to reduce proactive policing, that it's racist to pull somebody over for, have headlights out, or other things. That's where we've gone in probably the last four years in this state, that you no longer can be a cop and do your job, because it's, you're racist probably, or some other problem. You're targeting people. Well, when you're not proactive policing, guess what's happening? People are getting away with crimes. And I want to address the car camping, too. Has this council passed an ordinance over a year ago? I think it was an ordinance. And at the time, we were told by a certain council, that was going to be the best thing this council's ever done. Today, I don't think one person, one group has ever stepped forward that wants to deal with car camping. So this council did something, whether I agree with it or not, but no one wants to step forward, because they know the problem it's going to cause. No one wants this on their property. No one wants to deal with this. You know, that is a lot to go. And wherever you put these locations at for homeless, the crime's going to go up. You can go to anywhere in the state, and you'll see crime go up on the location of all these people. You're going to say, "You're cruel," but it's just facts. When you have people doing drugs and other things, the crime goes up. The crimes on the people that are good people there are going to go up, because they're going to get victimized, and the crimes around the businesses, everything's going to go up. That's what's happening. And due to this state law, you know, House Bill 315 and 3124, they've only made it worse. Now we can't be mean, we have to allow them to rest, so that has caused another problem. Every time we create laws, it probably causes two or three other problems. I know I'm not giving you the answers, but I'm just giving what I see every day, and what, how we're going, and the common thing of, and I, people want to come up here and say, "My neighbor, neighbor this." Well, I'm sure your neighbors next door do not steal your stuff. Mine, don't steal my stuff. Even ones I don't disagree with things, even on political stuff, don't steal my stuff. They respect each other's property. They stick neighbors' property, their houses, their yards, their everything. You know, "Hey, you left your car open." Even the ones I don't agree with politically, we still talk and be neighborly. These people are not neighborly, or they wouldn't act like this. They act like, some of them act like animals, and they treat people horribly. And then the, the good people that are there get caught up in this stuff. And it's just too bad that our society is going this way. And we can't, you know, I know what Mike Pelfrey talked about. This council cannot do anything about the immigration policy in this state. That is not a city policy. I don't think any of us are going to tackle that policy. It's a state policy, and that was put on a while back. So law enforcement, for like, I don't know, 40 years, Kessi, can't even call ICE, I think it's the 80s, can't even call ICE if there's problems. So you could see who's putting these policies up and figure this, and connect the dots pretty easily where they're coming from. I think you're pretty smart to figure out who's putting these policies up. This is all I got to say. Thank you.
Counselor Lovelace?
Yeah, a couple of them I will also address. We have indeed added more bathrooms, we recognize that. We also did trash pickup, we've upped the trash pickup, because we also realized that was a safety issue. So those are happening. I would also agree with you, Dave, David, that Mint is the one nonprofit that's out there and is doing everything they can. So anybody who wants to support something, I say, "Support Mint," because they're the one doing it. Something else, and this is kind of a piece that I never hear addressed, but the reality of it is, is I'm not sure where the county is on any of this. And the reality of it is, all the mental health funding that we get comes through the county. So options, and most of them on nonprofit, they get their money through the county. So it's not the city's job, it's really the county. And I also know they have emergency services, and they have things that they could come to the plate with if they so desire, but it's just something that they don't see as a problem. And so I would like to see more communication, and that brings me back up to my husband being here tonight and talking about his frustration, and the crime reporting. And I really feel part of the problem is that the people don't get the facts of how many, how much crime really is out there. I don't know how long ago it was, but some time back, they changed the reporting, so the courier only arrests people, I mean, only reports crimes that there were arrests or whatever, but none of the crimes that we've seen have ever been reported in the paper. You don't really see, you know the numbers are out there floating, but we don't see those numbers. And I'll go back to, you know, what you brought up back in 2020 it all started. Well, I'll also go back and say, that's about the same time we started cutting our police budget. I mean, we have gone through $3.6 million in police and fire cuts, and we're paying the price right now for that. And we did put a $12 fee on, which I know most people are very unhappy with, and I get it, but that doesn't even touch, that is just simply bringing us back to where we were. It is not increasing. And anybody in here who has seen where our city has gone in the last five years has to know how hard it has been on our police and our fire, with fires and with what's going on. I mean, they've been living down at our parks and going through that. So the reality of it is, we've made big cuts. We don't have a crime analyst anymore. We don't have the people to do the reporting and give the statistics out. So, and the DA, I mean, those of us who do read the paper, everybody's released. It's, it's like a open door. So even when we go into the September 1st, and when we start doing the, I can never remember the deference or whatever it is. Deflection, thank you. Are we going to be able to hold them? No, not with the system that we have, which once again, is the county and the city and everybody working together. And I had no idea that they don't put two people in a jail cell. That means we're working at half-capacity, because we have to pay the medical bills. I do remember Herman talking about how frustrated it was, because now, of course, if somebody gets hurt in jail, then we are responsible for their healthcare, and that's huge. So there've been big changes and big things that have happened, and they just, most people are just kind of oblivious to it, because they're sucked up into their own world. I get it, it's hard to get by, everybody's struggling. But we need more police. We need public safety. And I'm going to advocate, at our next meeting, we're going to start about putting together a police and fire advisory committee, made up of city and county. Let's get this information out to our people, so we can educate them about what really we need. So I read on one of the social media sites, which I always hate to go on... So, I read on one of the social media sites, which I always hate to go on, but I do, we all have our own little quirks, and of course, some of the people are just mad about the situation and how they call the police and the police don't show up, and they're never going to support the police again, and they're never going to support another levy. And I'm thinking, you're shooting yourself in the foot. That's what got us here in the first place, is because you don't support your cops. And that's not wearing "I backed the blue" button, that's meaning giving up some money because it takes money to get, because that's what police is, is police and fire are staffing. And we lose our staffing because they don't have the support in the community, the financial support, and they go somewhere else. So this community as a whole has to get on board and become more involved and understand that you have to come up to support them financially if you really want to change what a lot of us are seeing in our community. We can all just up and leave, my husband and I tell you, if we didn't have business, we'd be on our way to Tennessee tomorrow. But the reality of it is, it's not that easy. And so, we'll stay and we'll fight, but we need to get more people involved. And get, you know, and I ask, and I always ask Warren the questions, okay, what's going on down there? Why are people being released? What can we do? Some of this comes down from the state. I've understood that a lot of this comes down from the state. So where do we go with it? How do we make the changes? How do we get out there and get this out in the community? Because that's what we want to know. So, anyway, that's what I have to say.
Counsel Dillagrange?
Yeah, thank you for all the public comment tonight. Bill, we all want more police, but most people don't want to pay for it. And it's just like your wife said, you know, you can't, we can't have our cake and eat it too. If we want more law enforcement, the money has to come from somewhere. And so, you know.
Power to do that, just do it.
Point of order.
We do have the power to do that, and if you recall, I was in favor of doing that earlier this year, and there was not a majority on council to do that, so. But, we did look at some other options, and we ended up implementing the utility fee, which essentially keeps the status quo in place instead of looking at an option that would increase law enforcement. So, those options are still out there, those options can still be looked at and voted on if anyone in the community or on council wants to bring that up. Mr. Twiddell, on your stalking, I'm really sorry that that's happening, and I wish that this council had some power to help, but in reality, we direct the city manager, and I think that what you're asking is that either the DA, or the police chief, or some other level that we don't really have any control over. And I wish that we did because I want this to get resolved. I think we're all tired of dealing with this situation, not as much as you guys are, but we would all like it to stop. So, if you have any other ideas, staff or you, just please bring those up. Yeah, on the Parker place permit, I'm not sure where that's at, I'm not sure if that's being expedited, or if it can be expedited, or if it needs to be expedited, but Brad, do you have any idea of the status of that right now?
Staff did hold a meeting last week, and it sounds like, you know, they are still working on, in terms of, on the Mint side, on the site plan, but the city itself doesn't, you know, doesn't have a plan in front of us at this point. You approved the special use permit, so they have, you know, they have the authority to operate, but there are still a few site plan things that come through as far as the 15 pallet shelters, you know, to operate in the back, and, you know, getting that paved back there and some other improvements. So, my understanding is they are still working on it, we're ready at staff level to move it through.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that. Regarding car camping, we have a program in place where any non-residential property can participate and allow, I believe up to three car campers on their site. They have to provide, obviously, a bathroom and hand washing and trash. No one has taken us up on that offer, and that's understandable. It might be worth, counsel, and I think Counselor OJ brought this up, of maybe looking at the potential of some sort of, you know, partial grant program to help defray the costs of those items for potential properties that would be willing to help us solve this problem. Because, you know, as we all know, we don't have a lot of sites to put car campers, we don't actually have any right now. So, if we can distribute the problem and kind of spread it out and have people volunteer to help be a part of the solution, that would be ideal rather than the city taking on and shouldering that entire burden. So, maybe that's something that we can talk about here in the near future, is seeing if there's some way we can incentivize property owners to participate in the program. The Sanctuary City, Mike, I mean, you emailed us, Aaron responded, you know, that's not, there's not really anything that we can do about that. But, if you walk through J Street and you see a gang of migrants, please let me know because I've walked through and I haven't really seen an issue here in our community, but please keep me posted. Thanks.
Counsel Pell, did you have your hand up?
Just briefly, I just want to let Valerie know that based on some of what I heard tonight, I would be supporting the Public Safety Advisory Committee for, frankly, not so much for the advice that I would expect to get from them, but more, as you've advocated for, is to get more people educated, more people involved, and that might be the most efficient thing that council can do. So, I'm going to be supporting that. And for, I'm not exactly sure if it's with pure intent or not, but we did hear tonight from someone who made the erroneous claim, well, I shouldn't say the erroneous claim, they did preface it by saying they'd only seen one counselor at the site, at the J Street site. But to set the record straight on that, just for whatever potential reason that person would have to say that, to set the record straight, I know for a fact that at least seven counselors have been there. I can't speak for the eighth, but at least seven. So put that in your mind, please. And now, in the future, you can be accurate on that. And I'm not going to say that, you know, I was personally much help over there, but I did want to see exactly what the conditions were and my perception of who's there. And I don't think I was surprised, I think I pretty much verified what I had expected. And it's not a pretty sight, I'll agree. But, right now, the city is not, has made no claim to be running a managed campsite. That's not what we are, the council has not ever made that claim, we've not, we don't have the funding for that, we're not doing that. We have provided locations where people can choose to stay, and that's their choice. It'd be nice if we had more funding, we had more options. We don't have more options than that, and even if we had more funding, it's not clear that everyone in the council wants to do that. But, in any event, I just wanted to make it clear that at least seven counselors have been, had their feet on the ground over there, and I think have a good sense of what's going on. Thanks.
I will also agree, we heard a couple of comments tonight about trash at the J Street site. I know that the trash was just taken yesterday, the dumpster, and today it's already full, so it looks like it's filling about every 24 hours. We need to be reevaluated that the, maybe the amount of dumpsters aren't adequate, or the amount of pickup times is inadequate. In response to Mint permits as well, as of late, Mint has been spending their really finite valuable time meeting the immediate needs of people, of providing water, of locating shade, of moving people. And so you can imagine if they only have so much time and they're spending a majority of it meeting these policies that we've created, the permit process, I can imagine, their site plans, meaning with, you know, construction trade, I'm sure that that's also going to be extended as well. So, that's really where I come from when I say that we should make their job easier in bringing up a shelter, because I'm, at this time, it looks like the, you know, the community has finally come around to that idea that it is necessary, as well as the car camping program. PATH did some really great outreach work, and they identified a couple of, to my understanding, a couple of organizations and nonprofits that would be interested in this program, but the largest barrier is the financial aspect of it. The city does require sanitation services onsite, and renting a porta potty or having a hand washing station does cost money, so that's, Counsel Dillagrange is correct, I would like the council to consider some type of grant program for maybe a year or two, a pilot program for that safe parking to have somewhere for car campers to go. And to be really clear, I don't want this to get confused, I'm not talking about car campers that are troublemakers, I'm talking about people that are down and out on their luck, that are fully employed, people fleeing domestic violence, you get the idea. There was a comment this evening made that not all calls are reported on, I don't know if that's in the paper or with the police department, but just to provide some contacts, excuse me, context, for the month of July, our dispatch center received over 9,000 calls, and our police department responded to over 4,000. So as you can imagine, not every call will be responded to, or excuse me, will not be reported on, our police department is extremely busy. And lastly, I also wanted to join Counsel Dillagrange in providing my condolences to your situation, Mr. Twiddell. Everyone should live their life free of violence and threats of violence. I wish that there was more I could do, but I just have to refer to the police department. It's totally not fair what you're going through and you don't deserve that. All right, seeing no other comments from council, we'll move to our consent agenda. And these are items included are of such routine nature or without controversy so that they may be approved with a single action, and I will ask that Counselor Riker will read the items, please.
Item 4A, resolution authorizing the City Manager's Secure Attacks Order 49 with wastewater management services with Corello Engineers for services relating to the second clarifiers number one and two rehabilitation. 4B, motion approving Hearst-Agnus Avenue Comprehensive Plan and Sunning Map Amendment finding effect. 4C, motion approving the minutes of the City Council Meeting of August 21st, 2024. 4D, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Collaborative Economic Development Committee Meeting of July 25th, 2024. 4E, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Area Planning Commission Meeting of July 10th, 2024. 4F, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Committee on Public Art Meeting July 9th, 2024. 4G, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Urban Tree Advisory Committee Meeting of July 8th, 2024. 4H, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Bike Ways and Walkways Committee Meeting of July 11th, 2024. And 4I, motion acknowledging the minutes of the Tourism Advisory Committee Meeting of June 4th, 2024. I'd like to make a motion for these to be adopted.
Seconded by Counsel Yunker. And we usually don't discuss the consent agenda, so I'll ask how you vote. Counsel Riker, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counsel King?
Yes.
Counsel Fazer?
Yes.
Counsel Lovelace?
Yes.
Counsel Yunker?
Yes.
Counsel Pell?
Yes.
Counsel Dillagrange?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. We will move to matters for Mayor Council staff. Counsel, do you have anything? Seeing none, I will add today, I stated previously that I made it down to the J Street site, and there were just a couple of things that I wanted to bring to the radar of the council. One, I know last week we voted to allow a nonprofit to bring in water, doesn't seem as though that's being done as, maybe as it was planned by the council. So I'd like that to be on our radar, as well intentioned as you can is, it doesn't look like that plan is coming all together. And just consider that we reconsider, ask that we reconsider to have that line that we're already going to be installing in spring of next year, installed sooner than later. It's just something that we're already going to do, so we might as well do it. Mint is really haphazardly bringing water in, well intentioned, but again, we really want them focusing their energy on getting that shelter up and running, not meeting those basic needs. And also, I did want to, I spoke to a few folks down there, and I wanted the council to sit and think about possibly carving out special circumstances for the extremely medical fragile and elderly. I know this is something that the city of Roseburg effectively conducts in their publicly-owned, authorized camping spots, and this is, again, for people with special circumstances. I know we've, we've been told that our police department, you know, shouldn't be tasked with conducting case management, and I certainly appreciate that. I spoke with Dr. Bruce Murray, and he had said that he would be willing to sign off on something like that. So if the council would be, you know, in favor of moving or even talking about granting special circumstances with authorization of a physician, that's something I'd like us to talk about. There's certainly a population there that deserves that type of thought. And I think that's all that I have. Staff, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Pointing at me. I just feel like I would like to make a comment about some of the things that were said tonight, specifically about the PD. We're in this bit of an anomaly when it comes to crime, when it comes to livability, when it comes to staffing and finding the right people to put in patrol cars and respond to calls for service. It's really difficult to hire good people. So yes, I've been asking for more people for a long time, but that coupled with even finding good people exacerbates the problem overall. And I just wanted to reassure you, council and our community, that our department, the men and women of the PD, are committed, their morale is high, and we're confident that we can find good people in the near future.
I just want to thank council for tonight's action, and also let you know that Public Works is handling most of the services at the J Street location. So if you do see something, and I encourage the public as well, that is getting a lot out of control, to please call us so that we can make a quick adjustment to the service levels with the providers. We did double the trash service on Monday and doubled it again today. We're trying to also then stay within the budget that you did grant or that we're going to be bringing to you, but, and all of these changes do have financial impacts, and as we start doubling and doubling again service levels, that will come at a cost. So we're trying to ramp into it at a, but not overshoot too far. So, but if you see something and it's not to your needs, let us know so that we can get on top of it sooner than later.
And I, I was just going to add, because I, I was at a meeting with UCAN, which you were, we were both there, and UCAN said that they were trying to work on something, has that, they said they were going to talk to you, I mean, did something happen with that, or what, where are we with that?
We were making some initial connections. I think it's at a point where UCAN and Mint need to sit down at the table together to kind of agree what level of service they're going to provide. We've gone, I think as far as the city can go without literally contracting for the services ourselves, and that was not the direction that was given. We don't have funds for that. So, we're at a point where either we need direction to take on that service and seek, but I don't think that's what you wanted to do. Or, back to Counselor OJ, we look at running a water line and providing the service there. And I thought that Brad put out a feeler, but nobody jumped on setting up that meeting right away, you know, and so that's where that is that I'm aware of.
What meaning about, about the services, is that?
Getting UCAN and Mint together, and maybe even us there to help talk about what service levels should look like. But yeah, we made some initial calls, passed some information along, they, one of the other, PATH, I believe it was, did a bunch of amazing work of coming up with who could provide that service. So I mean, the resources are all there, and nobody has actually contracted for those services.
Okay, thank you.
Just two quick things, Community Development Block Grant, we have got word yesterday from HUD, we got 300, about $382,000 for the fiscal year that starts October 1st, so that's about a $20,000 increase from last annual action plan, so that was good news. Yesterday was also the opening day for anyone who wants to participate in the weatherization and rehab application program, as you know, this is our third year. And just yesterday, we had 42 people come into Community Development to apply for that program. 42 people come into community development to apply for that program. So it's severely underfunded, not anywhere near those we'll get, we'll be able to be assisted this year, but a lot of interest. And then, yes, to just follow up on what Jason said, Councillor Lovelace, the UCAN did state verbally that they are, you know, working towards funding through OHCS for water. They are confident that there is money there to do that, but they have not confirmed what that amount is. So it's still active in terms of their discussion, excuse me, discussions with the state.
Councillor Dillagrange?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the water line question. Jason, if council did want to move forward with that water line, do you have an estimate of how long that would take?
I would be safe in saying a minimum of three weeks if you told me to get started tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
All right, seeing nothing else, should we go home?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded by Councillor Lovelace. It appears unanimous. We are adjourned.